This one here, man open.
There you go.
The best one came in late.
Oh, pardon me. What's the ball?
Yes. Do you think that the USN?
Don't say it for years.
I know you have.
What time you got? Time you got, Al?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve this last meeting.
Question or comment? On favor?
Aye.
There's no salary board, we can delete that.
Yeah, where are we? Okay, good. Eighteen years of service.
Seven. Okay, we have some employees with years of service. First one we've gotten here that is here. Terry Gulick is with us for 15 years. Terry, congratulations.
Who was there before you?
Before me?
Yeah.
We have two other ones. Sherry Menorsky for five years. Sherry's not here. And we also have Erica Johnson for 15 years. She's not here.
Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
Second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item eight on the agenda, cash disbursements and electronic transfers. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item nine for some hours and door payments. Questions or comments? Yes.
The last one, it talks about basic training for $3,376. And that will cost the county $3,376. What kind of basic training? I guess for what, jail?
It's for the jail, yes.
And what are their positions going to be, these three women? Are they... Are they studying for what?
Well, it's part of the certifications for at the jail.
To be guard.
To be guards?
All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda.
Second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 10 on the agenda, resignation of Billy Canfield. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye. Motion approved item number 11 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 11 on the agenda, except the resignation of Jacklin Canfield. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 12 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 12 on the agenda, change of status from part-time to full-time. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
And 13.
Oh, boy. You know, I don't mind 13 so bad, but I gotta tell you, I don't like 14 or 15. I guess we don't get one without the other, do we?
Nope.
We could not do any, we saved much money.
The problem is the phones don't work.
They won't have any IT.
The phones don't work. I tried calling here three times this morning, I couldn't get through anybody.
And how come they stopped?
They can't even get parts for the phones anymore.
So they broke down, is that it?
Yeah, they're old, they're outdated, they're... I can't believe they cost that much money.
It's so much money, it's ridiculous.
Motion to approve item number 13.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 13 on the agenda, the purchase of your phones from Guyet Communications. Questions or comments?
So the cost is going to be nine... Almost $97,000?
Right.
Just for the phones?
The phones itself.
And you're...
That's the easy part.
That's the easy part. And that's out of the general fund?
Yep.
How come you didn't figure out to get it out of Act 13?
Well, we probably could, but we didn't want to take it out. All favor?
Aye.
And 14?
Oh, boy. I don't believe it costs that much money.
Aye. That was Act 13.
Motion to approve item number 14 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve the purchasing of cable and fire... Or wiring for the network infrastructure. Questions or comments?
So network infrastructure is coming out of Act 13?
Yep.
For $228,846. And this is for what? The fiber wiring?
This is for the wiring and cabling to run the backbone of the system.
For the phone system?
Well, not only the phone, but it runs computers, all the computer systems. Everything we have is outdated, it's old copper. There's no fiber in the building whatsoever.
So that one you figured out could fall under Act 13?
IT falls under Act 13.
And under what category?
IT.
Tech... Technology?
Information technology.
Information, that's a category?
Yes. All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 15 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve the network infrastructure for installation and support of information technology at the county courthouse. And this is all the switches and connections.
And that's a... That's another $226,918. Almost the same like the other amount. By what? $2,000? And that's for switches?
For all the switches, electronics, the network, and put it all together.
And falls under Act 13 funding? I guess, what's the... That company must be happy, Guyet?
Well, these aren't.
The Guyet is selling you all this stuff and they're... They're making some big bucks here?
Right.
We gotta do something for it. Unfortunately, the tin cans and strates that we have connected don't work anymore.
Yeah, that is not Guyet, that is not...
That's Cirrus.
That's Cirrus.
So is that a mistake in this thing?
Yeah, it says Guyet, that one is Cirrus.
It says Cirrus?
Yes, Cirrus.
And what about four... What about 14? Is Cirrus?
No, 14 is Guyet.
15 is Cirrus?
Yes.
And what about 13?
That was Guyet.
That's Guyet, oh, okay.
All favor?
We've been pounding the double out of them for the last six... This should've been done six months ago. And I... We needed to be convinced that this actually had to cost this much money. Because I'm still not comfortable with the fact that it does, but this place hasn't been rewired in 25 years and the stuff we have here yet doesn't work.
All favor?
Aye.
He's got a question.
Other question?
This is 2014 Act 13 money?
This is... This will be coming out of the... Part of it will come out of the 20... 2013 somewhere, it'll come out of 2014.
If Act 13 goes away, you still have this. This is ours, then?
This is ours, yeah. Yeah, this isn't something that we gotta rebuy in two years. And actually, the cost savings on this, this actually pays for itself within seven years. Just with the redevelopment of this, we're looking at about $30,000 savings alone just on the phone bill because we'll be able to use a lot less lines. That's the other problem we have, is the number of phone lines. Was it like $30,000 a month or $30,000 a year?
It's a $29,326,92 a year. Because what we're able to do is instead of having, say, 60 lines come in here, we can have pipe, what's called a P2PRIs, which are 48 lines, and all the numbers can be transferred onto those 48 lines. So you're cutting all the costs up. Plus, we're low in your long distance, too.
Right.
16. Mike. If Cirrus is gonna do such a good job putting us in this, what they're gonna do for $226,000, why do we need to pay them another $80,000 to maintain the phone system that they should... When they put in that they warranty and we shouldn't have any trouble with?
The Cirrus is the network architecture, it's all your servers or switches. And so what that pays is for the yearly software updates, all your switches and servers as well, it's full replacement. So if a switch goes bad or server goes bad, instead of them coming to fix it, they come take it out and put a new one back in.
But aren't we paying for that with the purchase price the first time around? Why should we have that?
Well, what you're paying for is you're paying... You get one-year warranty and maintenance on the first year. What you're paying for now is year two through five. And so it's more or less, it's a warranty as well as, anytime a software patch comes up or anytime a new software comes out, it's automatically included in the update. Plus, if anything breaks, they just come replace it out and put it right back in. So there's no... There's no cost to you if something goes bad.
But we pay them $226,000!
Yeah, specifically, it's only a one-year warranty and one-year maintenance on any of those things. That's industry standard. And you're saving about $35,000 by purchasing the warranty upfront, you know, for next five years instead of paying for it each year.
These people gotta rack it!
It sure sounds like it.
And this is state contract pricing, this is CoStar's pricing. This is all... This is negotiated pricing off the state contract. So it's probably the best pricing out there.
How long we been kicking you around on this trying to get... How long we been kicking you around on this to get these prices to...
We beat 'em up for about the last three months, I would say, to get the pricing. And actually, if you look at the pricing we've got, it's very competitive compared to what's out there. That's why it's taken so long, is negotiating with them and trying to get the best price possible.
Still too much!
Yes, I agree. I agree. The problem is, we're replacing 20 years of technology at one time, is what we're doing. We're replacing all the network, all the cabling and telephone system, all at one time.
It's a lot of money!
Yes, sir, it is. I agree with you.
Can't you just go back to the old days, you know, with the phone on...
Tink can in the string!
Can we just do that?
Motion to approve item number 16.
I'll second.
For the record, the gentleman who is speaking, who is addressing the chair?
Yeah, what's... Who does he represent?
Mike represents us. This is Mike McGrady, is with MCM Consulting. He is the consulting group that we brought on board to review the phone system and our networks, to make sure that we have specialists here, that we're buying the right things that we need for the county and not getting something that some fancy salesman wanted to sell us.
And what is his salary for being a consultant?
He's on a consultant fee with the county. And he has different projects and it varies with different projects.
And then you're talking about this number 16. $85,000 for a five-year or four-year... Actually, it's a four-year warranty contract from the general fund. So now, in order to have this expensive phone system, $85,000 for four years?
No, that's the... The $85,000 covers year one through five, and it's actually for the network infrastructure. So it's all the servers, all the switches, it's all that equipment, plus all the software licenses for it. So it's a... It's a replacement warranty for anything that goes bad, as well as any software updates for the next five years. But that's for the network infrastructure, is what that's for.
You lose one server a year, it pays for itself.
This is renewable in year five for the same amount?
That... No, we'd have to renegotiate after year five.
But it would be in that price range?
Well, we would hope it would be in that price range. Probably will depend on, you know, the markets and what goes on with the markets.
I hope it'd be less.
That's right, I hope it's less.
All favor?
Aye.
Number 17?
Motion to approve item number 17 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 17 on the agenda, the extension of the parking lot for the air chiller and generator. Questions or comments?
It's for what kind of a service plan? For what? Parking lot, what did you say?
We're extending the parking lot out back to put the new air chiller for the air conditioning and the generator.
So this is a service plan for three years?
I'm on the... I'm sorry.
Well, you're... This was the 17?
I'm sorry, 17, yep. This is a service agreement with Cleveland Brothers for the maintenance and on the caterpillar of Skidstew that we have. It's a three-year.
It's a three-year maintenance plan? For $2,800? At least that sounds cheap now compared to...
Still a lot of money. All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 18 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 18 on the agenda, which is the purchase of a lightning protection package designed from Ace Lightning Protection. Questions or comments?
Just out of curiosity, what does this thing look like?
Well, it's an engineering plan, is what it comes in. What happens is he comes in as a consultant, reviews the facilities, looks at the resistance that we have in the buildings, what our groundings are, and determines what we need to do to upgrade our grounding so that we don't have... So it'll kind of alleviate some of the lightning strikes that we've been getting. When the last lightning struck, strike that came in did a lot of damage to the facility. And basically, what they found is part of the problem is, is all this wiring we have in the building, this old copper wiring is running right next to a lot of the services. So when the service gets struck by lightning, it just bleeds right over into the other grounding and fries all the systems.
Does the five grand cover an installation of...
No, no, it's just for the design and the review.
But the way it's worded...
It should be for the design and review.
Did you purchase it lately? Yeah, Bruce, you're right. They'll say we're buying it for $5,000.
Right.
Where'd you get this from?
So it's the design and the review? For $5,000, though?
Design and review.
Any other questions? All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 19 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion to approve item 19 by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall. And this one is to extend the parking lot in the back for the air chiller and the generator. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
20.
Motion to approve item number 20 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 20 to advertise the sale of the three but while we clean 68 boilers that we have. Questions or comments? Yep.
Those boilers are being replaced by the...
Natural gas clothes.
The gas that's coming in that you guys have approved. So these are oil burners?
Right.
And how old are they?
They've gotta be at least seven, eight years old.
So they're not that old?
Yeah, they've still got some life left in them. So that's why we're putting them up a bit. All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 21 is listed on the agenda.
Second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 21 on the agenda, generation for the tax plan to grow. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 22 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Grecos and by Commissioner Hall to approve item 22, approved people's security bank trust for a six-month CD, start date of September 25th, at interest rate of 0.8%.
Something missing there.
Yeah, how much?
0.8%.
No, how much is the CD?
Oh, $2 million. I'm sorry.
Oh, just a mere bag of shells.
And it's 0.8, that means under 1%?
Yeah.
Why even bother? Why don't you just put it under a mattress?
Around here, the mattress would probably get wet. All favor?
Aye.
And 23?
Motion to approve item number 23. Did we get any?
Yes, we did. I'll second that. All favor? Aye. We have two. One we can't open, it was received after the bid timeline. We have one that was received by the due date.
It is from First General of Southern New York Inc., Endwell, New York. I suppose there's a price in here someplace. Base bid. Now, we'll have to figure out what that means. But it's $117,500 is the base bid. Now, I don't know if there's anything else. We'll have our engineers look at it and we'll decide, figure out if this meets all the specifications of what we need to have done. And if it does, they'll give it. There's a bid bond attached. There's the surety company. Maybe I'm being... And what's this bid for? Is there two? That's a second copy. I don't think there's nine, does he? There is a... What are we doing here? Why is there... Lots of copies. Okay, so they're all the same. It's not... Looks like the total base bid of $117,500.
What's the issue with the column?
They're ready to fall off. The capitals that are on top of them are all rotted out. So the columns have to be taken out, the capitals made and put in, the columns put back in before they fall off in front of them.
You know, does someone have already fallen off? Did you see that, Scoop?
I did not.
They're all... They're empty. Some of them fallen off already.
How many columns are there involved in this?
All the ones on the front of the building.
How many?
Five.
All right. It's that. We're at public comment. Questions or comments?
Are you aware of the amount of cases of this mysterious virus that's spreading through the country? And they don't know where to attribute it? And I'm wondering if Susquehanna County is prepared to deal with something like that?
It's all in the Midwest. That's where it's gonna stay.
It's in Ohio.
It's in Ohio.
It's not coming to Susquehanna.
Okay, you have a sign up.
I love it.
What kind of virus? Do you know what it is, a line, just please?
It's get the kids.
I know.
The kids, yeah.
What's the name of this virus?
One hospital had 500 cases in one day.
I saw that.
Really? Wow. And is there a name for this thing?
Yeah, it's some sort of...
Ent...
Some sort of entorvirus.
It's a respiratory illness. Starts out as kind of like the common cold and then gets worse till they have trouble breathing.
I wonder what the source is?
They don't know.
I'll bet she's got a Latin surname.
What are they doing there, telling?
Oh, sure do.
The hospitals have a reporting system in Pennsylvania, so they're on alert for it already. So if they would, you know, start to get those cases, that would be reported immediately to Department of Health, and the Department of Health would track that. And they would notify your emergency management here in the county that you have incidents of that. They would notify them, force 911. 911 would notify the EMS services and the fire department responding. And that's like you track it. So the hospitals would pick it up first and then it would be sent out statewide that it's in the state and what precautions you have to take.
Not coming here right now.
From your mouth to God's ears.
Hopefully. Motion to adjourn?
Al?
Al, I talked to Mike, but I didn't get a chance to talk to you before the meeting. And he said I'll get a resolution to him with the farm beer and the grain and all I want on the dictionary. And you got a copy that you guys will probably go along with it to approve it.
Yeah, once we get it, then we'll have to pass on to our legal and they have to look at it. We've got one we're working on right now that had an ass in us that we're looking, going through now, so...
But this would affect not only just farmers, it would affect rural people and anybody that has an acre of ground and they got water runoff. And they had the biggest sign-up for that progress day against it with anything they've ever had.
Right. Well, when you can't control your own water on your own property and you can't do what you want with your own water, that becomes a big issue. Eric?
How much are you paying for the new gas boilers? Are you getting three boilers? Since you're selling three boilers?
Well, the contract with Johnson Controls was $4.3 million, but that includes the three boilers for the facility across the street, the two boilers at the jail, heating units getting replaced, plus including a new service in the facility, plus including all the heating and air conditioning and all the ductwork and all of the chillers and everything that goes with it. So the price of each boiler, I couldn't tell you.
So you're talking about, what, nine or 10 boilers?
Well, two for this building, three for that building, it's five, and there's like six at the jail.
How come they have six in one jail?
Well, they're not really...
How did that happen?
Typically, they're not boilers. The six at the jail are electric... Currently, electric resistance units on the roof, so they're replaced with gas units.
So you don't know the individual price then? So it's all under that $4.3 million umbrella?
Yes.
And then I wanted to mention about leather stocking becoming business of the year. Do you know what kind of parameters they use, the economic development board, to even decide what is business of the year?
You'd have to check with them.
So you don't have that information, why they chose leather stocking, which is not even like a local business? They're from out of this county and out of the state?
Well, the past years, they've also chosen other businesses that were out of the county and out of the state, too. But again, you'd have to...
What was last year's business of the year?
Boy, I know there was the one in Forest City, the grocery store in Forest City.
Right, and I think these were also...
And then there was, wasn't the McDonald's chain?
The Cabot was the year before?
Cabot was the year before, I think.
So last year was a grocery store in Forest City?
Well, there was three last year.
Oh, three of them, yeah?
Yeah, there was an individual, there was a local business, and then there was a chain business. They can talk to the progress authority, the ones that handle all that.
And any updates on the bridges? How are they doing?
Bridges are coming along. They've got several in the county they're working on now. Our bridge crew, which is one person, is doing a lot of work on the bridges. The big push will be next year with PennDOT. Next year, most of the money that's getting allocated from PennDOT for the northern part of the state is gonna be basically used on bridges. There's like 30% of the bridges in the state of Pennsylvania are structurally deficient and they've gotta get them all up to speed. So although we're getting... Still getting blacktop work done today on roads in the area, next year will probably be a real thin year on any blacktop work because a lot of the... Most of the dollars are going into bridge replacement and repair.
So what are they doing on 706 in the borough? All of that work that's going on? Is that just drainage? I mean, what is that?
Well, they've got the drainage and they're re-blacktopping, too.
So it's all drainage and the...
Drainage and blacktop.
Blacktop. And how many bridges are being worked on right now, would you say?
Well, there's gotta be...
In our county?
Well, our individual, he's working on... He's got 30 of them that he's working on, different areas he's doing on those.
30 bridges in the county?
Yeah, that he's working on. And then the state has at least, I know of, at least six or eight that they're doing. And plus, some of the townships and municipalities are working on some of their bridges. So there's quite a few.
Quite a few. So who's this individual you're talking about that's working on the six to eight?
I'm sorry, working on what?
Who is the individual you're talking about that's working on six to eight bridges?
That's the state.
The state?
State's doing replacement on about six to eight bridges. You've got the one in Susquehanna that they've been working on for a couple of years. You have the one on 7A going out of Hollister, you got one on Harmony Road. There's one in Melford now that they're working on. And there's a few other ones in the county that the state's working on. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn? Second? All favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
What are you trying to pull up, Stacy? What's in New Milford?
Sounds like they're working on what?
That was to do?
So where... Where is it now?